Thanks, everybody, for joining us at 6:00 PM. So let's kick off this business meeting. Urbana School District 116. Roll call, please.
Member Stanton. Member Jones.
Here.
Member Hickson.
Here.
Member Baxley.
Here.
Member Langendorf here. Vice President Exum.
Here.
President Falowski.
Here. We have a quorum. Are there any additions, corrections, or modifications to tonight's agenda? No, seeing none. It's now time for citizen statements. If anybody wishes to make a statement before the board. There are these golden rod sheets in the back of the room. If you could fill it out and hand it to our recording secretary, Lori Johnson. We could put you in the queue, but we have two up right now. First up is David Guth. All right. Then let's get to Julie Beckett.
Can everyone hear me? Okay. All right. My name is Julie Beckett. I am the UHS German teacher. Just a little background. I have been the German teacher by myself for 28 years. I started in 1997. And so I've been running the program with five levels of German. First year through the AP level since then. This was the first year in my career that I was ever talked to about enrollment. There was no concern last year, no concern the year before, even though those students are still in my current classes. So I was talked to by my administration about combining two of my entirely different levels of German. A sophomore level and a junior level essentially into one class period. I was upset by this, of course, because you don't combine two levels of math and think it's okay. You don't combine two levels of reading abilities and think that it's okay. But for some reason, our administration has decided that foreign language is a place where it doesn't really matter what gets taught in each level. They can lump them together and the kids will get 50% of a curriculum each year. That's how I feel about it. But I'd like to have you think about it from a different perspective. I do have low enrollment in two of my classes, probably. I would say probably from a discouragement of enrollment when they're in the middle school. But I'd like you to look at it from this perspective of return on investment in what you're putting into these kids. Next year, I have the largest AP foreign language class of all the foreign languages. Every one of my students takes the AP exam. Every one of my students passes the AP exam with a four or a five. Every one of my students who's old enough takes the Seal of Literacy test. And we have probably 85% earning the entire full seal. And the other ones are commended. We're getting students who, thank you. We're getting students who earn scholarships. I have a student who can't be in our class next year because he's graduating. He got a three-year, full tuition-paid scholarship to Southern Illinois University because he chose to major in German and another subject area. He's getting three years paid. So to think that we're not getting our money's worth on these kids, I think is short-sighted. And I think that if we're looking at the benefit that those students give to our district, I think it's a lot more than what an enrollment number would say. And knowing that every year is different, we're going to have a different amount of kids achieving greatness in this program each year. And so I feel very strongly about it. I do not wish to combine these classes because I don't wish to have the students perform less than they've been able to perform so far. And I am their biggest advocate in this area. So I wanted to come here tonight and talk to you about that. And I appreciate that you're here to listen to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beckett.
Leave it on? Okay.
Hi, David. Are you ready?
Good evening, members of the USD 116 Board of Education, Dr. Ivory Tatum, Dr. Taylor, and Principal Guzman. We recently learned that USD 116 has canceled or combined courses for multi-level instruction for which students have already registered for the 2025-26 academic year. As parents of UHS sophomore and a 2022 graduate of UHS who's now at the University of Illinois, we are writing or expressing our concern in inquiring about the rationale behind these decisions. In particular, we want to understand the following. What is the estimated cost savings achieved by assigning master educators to a study hall in place of teaching specialized mandated curriculum for which they are trained, licensed, and contracted? What other comprehensive cost savings measures are being explored by the district? What is the impetus for the needed cost savings at USD 116? And are these decisions centralized or decentralized at the school level? And have these budgetary decisions and course cancellations and consolidations been filtered through the ISB mandates such as Illinois Acceleration Placement Act, the ACTEL Proficiency Guidelines? Why is the district promoting the Seal of Literacy program while simultaneously reducing foreign language instruction to include phasing out of form language courses at the middle school, German, and canceling combining courses at the high school? Is the district aware that ISB will require a second year of foreign language instruction to meet graduation requirements in the 2028-29 academic year? Also, is the district aware that most colleges require two to three years of foreign language instruction while others, such as the University of Illinois, prefer four years of foreign language instruction at the high school level for a student to be admitted? Has the class size limits been listed in the UHS 2025-26 Course Guide? And have parents and students been notified by the district of the canceled or combined courses for the next year? Since our current Project Lead the Way Engineering Curriculum is accredited and the curriculum is funded through grants from the organization, will USD 116 lose its accreditation to offer this curriculum? Thank you, as always, for your time, service, and leadership.
Thank you, David. Could you email it to me, by the way? If you have it, thank you. Next up is Minjuli.
Thank you very much, USD 116 School Board and Superintendent Ivory Tatum. Our family recently learned that USD 116 Central Office is canceling classes at UHS after students have already registered. I'm here to express my concern about the cancellation of classes for the 2025-2026 year. Our son was very excited to enter Urbana High School three years ago due to the challenging math and science curriculum, excellence in music and art, and diverse student body. He's very academically motivated with both STEM and music interests. With the support of UHS faculty, my son has thrived at Urbana High School, achieving a second-place Science Olympiad state finish with two individual gold medals and also being accepted to All-State Honors Choir for two years and achieving fives on all of his AP exams taken since freshman year and freshman and sophomore years. His success in these arenas is due in large part to his having access to challenging science, math, and music curriculum with excellent faculty support. As a junior, my son is currently taking AP Calculus BC with Louis Bushline. Thirteen students enrolled. And after registering for Calculus III next year, he learned the class is no longer available, although it is the only math class that continues his math progression and that of several other students. As someone who expects to major in a STEM field, he's quite concerned about his ability to apply for and be accepted into a top school without being able to take a higher level of math in his senior year. The UHS Course Catalog states, "A strong senior schedule helps show the applicant's commitment to higher education." I know that UHS aims to serve all students and help them achieve at their highest possible level. By removing Calc III, USD 116 is creating a real barrier for students in a core subject, which does a disservice to students who have worked so hard and mapped out their math plans since freshman year. If UHS wants to continue to be known for outstanding math and science, Calc III must be offered to students who need it to finish their four years of math. UHS is lucky to have Louis Bushline, an inspired teacher with the ability to teach high-level math and science, and his classes need to be offered to give our students their best chances at top colleges and universities. I know that Calc III is only one of several classes being removed. We've talked to many other families who have shared that the following classes are canceled. AP Microeconomics, Calc III, Business Law, Auto Service Tech IV, Intro to Engineering Design, Engineering Capstone, Electrical Communication, AP Spanish, Honors Art I, Art III Painting, Art III Printmaking, Art III Digital, AP 3D Art and Design. Web design may be cut from one year to one semester, combining French 5.6 and 7.8, combining German 5.6 and 7.8. Some add classes, and music theory moved every other year. We are concerned about how other students' future paths are also being affected by these changes. I urge the school board and central office to consider the wide ramifications of removing classes that our students need to succeed. The Accelerate Placement Act requires that Illinois public schools must have a policy that allows grade nine through 12 students who meet or exceed state standards in ELA, math, or science to participate in advanced placement programs. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, as well. Kate McLean. If anybody else wishes to make a statement, there's still time to fill out a sheet and hand it to Lori Johnson.
Here we go. Hello, I'm here in my capacity as a parent of a 10th grader at Urbana High School. She is in 5.6 German this year. She had planned on taking AP Micros. We have several reasons why we are here today. I will read from my paper, though. I'm here on behalf of my student and the German program, but I'm also defending higher-level classes that are being targeted for elimination or combination. These classes are not no enrollment, but they may be low enrollment because they're higher-level classes that are taken by devoted, high-achieving kids. Kids who want to learn higher-level languages, higher-level math, who've been counting on taking the AP levels, maybe getting the Seal of Literacy. You have to start in middle school to be able to take AP German. And these kids did. And you're cutting them off as they get to the finish line. Please leave the higher-level classes alone. And in addition, one of the hallmarks of great high schools and things that people look for is the number and success rate of AP classes, and we don't want to reduce that. Thank you.
Thank you. One last call for citizen statements. Moving on, there is no call for an executive session after tonight's meeting, so the chair would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Moved to second. In all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Student ambassadors report.
So tomorrow is going to be the mayoral recognition. It's at the high school gym. It's going to be from 5:00 to 7:00. And there's going to be keynote speakers that are listed there. So very excited for that. So if everyone and anyone who wants to come and join us and honor all our students who have done a lot of work, the mayoral recognition to get the certificate, you need at least 30 hours of volunteer, which in itself is a huge feat. But there are also levels. Bronze, I believe is after 50, silver after 75, and gold after 100 hours. So we'd love to see everybody come out and honor the students who have achieved that. Next, we have Science Olympiad. They won second overall in state, beating all of five cross-rival schools. Number one in entomology was Cecilia Birdsley and Sidney Godell. Number four in helicopter was Elliot Anderson and Natalie Pochesk. Number five, material science, was Natalie Pochesk and J.J. Lee. Number five in robot tour was J.J. Lee and Colin Guth. And number seven in wind power was Colin Guth and Elliot Anderson. And there were several others who also received state medals that earned them second place. So good luck. Nice job to our Science Olympia team. And then the last thing was, high school and middle school recently did elementary tour last Thursday. This is something that occurs every year. And the high school and middle schools, or eighth-grade middle schoolers switch schools. So this year, the high schoolers visited Dr. Preston Williams, King, and Leo. And we performed for the fourth and fifth graders to get them interested in the band program and see what instruments they can try. And then the eighth graders from middle school visited Yankee and Thomas Payne this year. So that was nice to be able to see the elementary students because they always get so excited, especially when we pull out the big tuba and they're just, wow, it's so big. So that was nice to see. Thank you.
All right, now it's time for board reports. Anybody wish to give a board report this evening? Go ahead, Jennifer.
I don't really have a report, but I have been hearing a lot about what the people who spoke here tonight spoke about. Both, obviously, we've all gotten letters through the board email and also from my neighborhood listserv and also from the meetings that we're supposed to go to now that we only have three-minute citizen reports. I've gone to three other meetings and I've heard about them there. So this is a widely felt problem. And I do feel, when we go back and look at our equity statement, the district, number one is, the district shall provide every student with equitable access to academically rigorous, social, and emotionally responsive, and culturally sustaining education, even when this means differentiating resources to accomplish this goal. And when we adopted this statement, I made my own statement which said, "Academically rigorous is different for different students." And we have to make sure that we are considering the range of students, the full range. And I guess I want to remind us of that tonight and figure out what can be done about it.
Too, want to thank those who came to speak tonight to tell your individual stories and I think hearing about your children and your program is very helpful to know where they started and where they want to go to. So thank you, and thank you for keeping to three minutes. So with so few of you wanted some more, I probably would have asked, but thank you very much for coming. I did go to two events since the last meeting. One was April 2nd. I went to the Yankee Ridge Multi-Language Fair that they had, and I believe it was put on by the PTA. And you would think that this was a school that has been in session for years. It was so well-run, with the parents there providing activities, the food, and the entertainment was, of course, wonderful. And it just seemed like, even though it was bad weather out, it was really well-attended. So I wanted to really express that I had enjoyment just going there and seeing the kids participate and the families. And the other thing I did attend was, on April 10th, I went to see the first play ever at the middle school. And they were very dedicated students who worked really hard, and it was really enjoyable to see. Some of them are hams, and I won't say who. So there was just wonderful things going on in our school. So I just, I can't get to everything, but the things that I do get to, I enjoy very much.
Anyone else?
So I wrote a few thoughts down, just because I can be pretty long-winded. I did want to talk just a little bit about the class eliminations. I want to start with thanking everybody that spoke, thanking the teachers, thanking all of those who have sent emails. I want to thank our administration because I know the work that they do is hard, and I don't want anything that I say to make them think that I don't trust the work that they do or have belief in that work. I know that we live in a world of uncertainty right now. I mean, there's so much going on, and we just don't know from day to day with budgets and other things that are going on in the world, where we will be. But I do want to urge us to make sure that we're not treating our curriculum solely through the lens of cost efficiency only. Some of the courses that are being considered for elimination, and I'm saying considered for elimination because it is my understanding that a final decision has not been made at this point. But many of those classes have several students in them. While it's not a full 20 or 25, you know, there are some that have 7, 8, 9, 10-plus students, which may look small on paper, but they represent a significant educational value. These classes offer advanced learning opportunities, career exploration, creativity, and in some cases, essential intervention support. Courses like AP Art, Welding, Journalism, Civil Engineering, and Upper Level World Languages help shape our students' future in meaningful ways, whether they're headed to college or into the workforce. Cutting the courses sends a message that only the largest, most utilitarian classes are valued. But education really isn't a one-size-fits-all situation. I'm hoping that rather than eliminating these courses outright, that we'll continue as a district to explore creative scheduling solutions, shared staffing. I know there's been some conversation on blended classes. I don't know what that looks like. I'm not a teacher. I did hear the one teacher today with the concerns, and I heard you. Even virtual options, maybe there's some partnerships available with nearby districts that we maybe haven't considered. That is a possibility. I know that Calc III right now, we do at the U of I, Parkland offers that as well, in a fully online version. I know because my son took it one summer that I paid for. But I just want us to be mindful that this is about more than numbers. It's an opportunity. It's preserving a sense of possibility for all of our students, whether they're future engineers, chefs, artists, linguists. The board doesn't decide these classes that are offered. You know, in fact, we're just learning about them, and I want that to be clear to people that this isn't something the board's been deliberating on, and we've made this decision. This is a decision that is at the school and administrative level. However, we do approve the overall budget, which gives us the responsibility to ask questions and advocate for thoughtful prioritization. And I know I'm an outgoing board member. My time is really short. I think I have one meeting left to seat the new board. I hope I don't have to be on the other side of the table yapping at you on things that I dislike. But again, you know, I say that, and just to bring a little lightness to this, but I do hope that we are able to honor fiscal responsibility and protect the richness of our academic offerings because that is a piece that makes Urbana special. And I am a parent who has benefited from that through my own children, who have gone on to do amazing things. My son went through Project Lead the Way. We didn't even know when he took the Project Lead the Way exam that it was going to mean college credit for him. I didn't know it was like an AP exam that you don't even have to pay for, but it was. And he got college credit, and he now has an engineering degree. And I know that's just one example in one area. And I try to not make that make me sensitive to the situation because I am looking at the overall picture, especially as an HR director at the University of Illinois, where I know what it takes, both on an academic side and a career side. So again, that's my two cents. It's not to say I don't trust what the administrators are doing, but I do want to make sure that they are really, really looking at this and really thinking about all the options that are available before a final decision is made.
Thank you. You've spoken far more eloquently than I've gotten prepared, so I'm going to cut it down. There's one more point that hasn't been made yet that I really want to make. And like I said, this is the first this board has heard from it about the issue in the past week or so. The one thing that concerns me, and I haven't done due diligence to verify this, but you know, if we have fallen against past practice with regards to collaboration with our UA and our teachers, that's counter to something this board holds dear, which is a partnership with our union and with our teachers and shared decision-making. I mean, the absolute decision is made at the administration level and the board level, but it's done with collaboration and partnership with our union. And if we're walking away from that, we're changing what Urbana is, and that's something I won't stand for, just flat out. So one last thing, I just wanted to thank Tori for her six years of service on the board and St. Lally for her two years of service on this board as well. It's hard work. You guys have put in hundreds and hundreds of hours and done a great job for us. So thank you for being here last phone meeting. And yeah, anybody else want to give a board report? Okay. Administrative reports. First up is Consolidated Plan and Grants Update.
And Tanya is joining us online through Zoom, so she's coming up right now.
Good evening, everyone. Very excited.
Good evening, everyone. Very excited that we get to share this information with you tonight. Sorry that I am not able to be there in person, but we will make sure that we answer all the questions that you might have during this time. Thank you. Every year, we have to review the CDP and check to make sure that it's in line with the work that we do. Go ahead and advance the slide. The Consolidated District Plan is frequently referred to as a CDP. It oversees our federal entitlement grants within our district. So tonight, you will be seeing and hearing reports on several of our grants. Not all of them, though, are included in the CDP. You have Title I, Title I Neglected, Title I School Improvement, Title IV, and IDEA, along with Title III, and a few other features that we'll be talking about. Since 2019, we have had to work to blend and braid our grants together. And note that that was prior to COVID, and COVID kind of expedited the process. We need to, as federal grant overseers in the district, coordinate the efforts that we're making, trying not to duplicate them, and make sure that we're giving honor to the survey information and feedback that we get, as we hold different events in the district. If we could go ahead and advance the slide. The Consolidated District Plan, if you had a chance to look through it, is about 57 pages in length. Inside that document, there's a summary of our district needs assessments. We do a lot of assessment now, as compared to when we started this several years ago, so there's a great deal more data to take into consideration as we work to plan. Our stakeholder engagement activities help us to put together summaries of what we're looking for, what we need to do, where does our energy need to be focused. We also have to include non-public schools in a consultation process, where they help to determine what they feel they would like to participate in. It's, for Title I, that one is for the number of low-income students that they have within their school. And then for Title II and Title IV, it's based on their total enrollment, and the number of Urbana students that are enrolled in their schools. So it is an ongoing process, and so we'll be filling in more documents as the schools send them back to us. The plan must also support students and the goals that they have moving forward. We need to support professional development and support parents and families. It also has two tabs within the program itself, for Youth and Care Stability Act, and a bilingual services plan. Go ahead and advance. Tonight presenting, my name's Todd Udekan. I'm Director of Grants and Secondary Leadership. We'll have Beth Ladd, Executive Director of Student Services, Yvonne De Smith, Director of Professional Development and Elementary Leadership, Jennifer Roan, Principal at Gerber Schools, Lupe Riconi. She heads up our Title III and other grants that she'll share about tonight. She's our Director of Multilingual Programming for grades K through five. And then on the next slide, you'll see that we also have tonight Kelly Russell to present on two grants that she oversees. Beth Ladd will also present on a state-level grant for early childhood. Shawna Share will be with us tonight, Principal at Adult Ed on the TEOP Grant. Stronger Connections is a state, please correct that little piece right there. It is a state-level grant that we participate in, as well as after-schools programs grants. The graphs that you'll see on the slides ahead are based on the totals of the grants that you see tonight. So tonight, we have a little over $8 million in our grants that we'll be sharing information about. And there will be some comparisons and graphs at the very end as well. At this time, I would invite Kelly Russell to come up and, or grab the mic, and please fill us in on Early Childhood Prevention Initiative.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. I'm Kelly Russell, the Program Coordinator for CU Early. Our program is a prevention initiative, home-based, funded program through the Illinois State Board of Education. And in addition to the ISB funds that we receive, we also receive funds from the Champaign County Mental Health Board. We serve expectant families and children birth to age three. We serve the youngest learners in our district. Our program is housed at the Urbana Early Childhood School. CU Early is funded to serve 85 families and 95 children. We have a staff of five. This includes four home visitors, two of which are bilingual Spanish speakers. We provide child development and parent education activities in families' homes bi-weekly. We also provide monthly playgroups for all of our enrolled families. Our program staff complete developmental screenings on all enrolled children and make referrals to early intervention if a delay is suspected. When children are pre-K ready, we help them transition into Urbana Early Childhood, Champaign Pre-K, or Champaign County Head Start. Our program partners with the Champaign School District to provide services to pregnant and parenting teens in local high schools, alternative schools, as well as Urbana Adult Ed. CU Early implements the Baby Talk Curriculum. We are a high, we're quality confirmed, which means our program has met and exceeded all of the requirements to provide the highest-quality services to children and families. I don't have any, do you have any questions regarding CU Early?
You don't want to talk about the mental health part? Okay.
I, I, with the Champaign County Mental Health Board, we, this is our second grant that we are, have funds for, and we, it's funded to provide us with one bilingual Spanish-speaking home visitor. This is a two-year grant, and it ends in FY '26.
I just want to add and highlight the work that Kelly and her team do, having been the Principal at Early Childhood with her for three years. She's one of the longest-standing birth-to-three programs in the area. She is one of the only ones that's bilingual. And as we know in our community, how important it is to have Spanish bilingual staff to support our community and incoming families. And she also works diligently with all of the other birth-to-three programs, and supports them in doing work that she's been doing for many years. So I just wanted to highlight that. And, and just a shout-out, because she's working with our youngest little ones, and supporting people throughout this community and county beyond just Urbana. And really, her staff is on call 24 hours a day for their families, which is something unusual for our, for our staff. So, I wanted to highlight that.
Thank you.
So I'm Beth Ladd. I'm the Executive Director for Student Services. So I oversee, continue to oversee the Preschool for All Grant that funds our early childhood program. And just want to highlight the fact that our early childhood program has been in existence for over 50 years. We just celebrated that recently last year. It is one of the truly inclusive programs that exists in our district and the state. The slide before you has our funding. This funding has been stable and maintained for many years. If you've been on the board before, you know I'm going to ask you to advocate to your legislators and your representatives that we need more funding in this area to increase the number of students we're serving, and to be able to afford the program as we deliver it at such a high-quality level. And so, this year, we wanted to highlight a little differently what happens at our Early Childhood Center. So we are a fully-play-based program, and really working on students across all of the areas. Emotional, physical, mental, and social well-being are priorities of all of our staff. I don't know if anybody really understands the requirements of the Preschool for All Grant unless you are working in a Preschool for All Grant. And there are really significant, high-quality requirements that include family engagement, supporting families beyond just the two and a half hours a day we have students. We are lucky enough to have multi-age classrooms, which means that our students are learning from each other in those spaces. We have a daily schedule that's actually quite rigorous, even though it is around play. And we really are held to high standards that our teachers have to be aware of. Our program is entirely free to families. We cannot ask them for money for anything. Everything we do is provided to them without charge at all. We also have quite a few memorandum of understandings with community programs. That's a part of the requirement, that we are connecting families to resources that are available to them outside of our school district. Every single one of our staff has to have their own individualized and targeted professional development plan. That includes all of our teaching assistants, all of our related staff, and I think that's another unique component of a Preschool for All program. We do screenings two days a week, every week that we're in session. That is five to six to seven new students that are screened every day that we hold screenings, to either place them into our program and determine that they need services, or to put them on a waiting list if we need to do that. We also do two weeks of screening in the summer. And in order to do those high-intensity screenings, we have family coordinators that meet with the family and gather information, and a teacher that meets with the student. And at times, we bring in our speech-language pathologists to determine if those young learners have additional needs. We are lucky enough to have family coordinators that focus on literacy, Spanish, and French, and I think that's a huge asset to our program. And those staff have been around supporting our program for many years, and really support the families, support the students, and support the teachers and the work they do with their families, which I think is a huge asset. The next grant that I oversee is our Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. There's a preschool component, and so we get just a little bit of funding that helps support an additional teaching assistant at early childhood, potentially two teaching assistants in any given year. It's a very small amount of money, and, but is part of what we're required to do to make sure that we're serving our youngest learners with disabilities in our preschool program. We also have just our typical Individuals with Disabilities Education Act IDA funding. It's called the Flow Through Grant. We provide funding for up to 21 teaching assistants. We do a lot of additional supplemental supports for technology for our students. We also support a lot of sensory needs through the IDA grant. We have amazing sensory spaces in all of our buildings. Looks different in each building. Some are more developed and larger than others, but that's something we're continuing to work on, and a lot of that funding comes from IDA grant. We also provide a lot of professional development, either internally within the district or externally with our IDA grant. We also are a district that uses TCI, or Therapeutic Crisis Intervention, as a de-escalation model, as well as physical intervention for our students that need that. And we have four trainers right now, and we're looking to add a couple more to our rotation. And they are providing training for our teaching assistants, our teaching staff, our administrators, to make sure that they're able to handle crisis situations. And then part of our IDA funding goes to some administrative and administrative assistant staffing. Any questions?
Going back to Little Childhood Grant.
Yeah.
Are we, in terms of like the enrollment, are we constrained due to grant size, or do the physical size of our early childhood school?
Both. So our building is at max capacity at 360 students. We have 12 classrooms that run 24 sessions. Each teacher teaches two a day. Those classrooms can have up to 15 students, which puts us at 360 students.
So, so if the district decided to build that fourth pod...
If we built that fourth pod, which would be green, I don't know if you know our colors in the Early Childhood Center, but that would be the Green Village. And if we did the Green Village, then I can guarantee you that we would be eligible for additional funding from ISB to grow the program. That is the only money that is coming out right now, is to increase student enrollment. You can apply for additional funds if you increase student enrollment.
Reason I bring that up is we're doing strategic planning right now. One of the things that's going to come out of that is a 10-year-plus facilities plan. And I just wanted people to be reminded of the fact that we scaled back that project.
Yeah.
When we, when we did it, due to budgetary reasons, along with when we refurbished then Prairie School, now DPW. We pulled back on that, too, and didn't refurbish all the classrooms. There's a debt owed to that campus on both sides.
I appreciate you bringing that up, Paul, because if, if you, as a district, decided to add the additional Village, as we call it, which has already, I believe the foundation already exists, so that, that was built when the school was built. You would add four new classrooms, which would be eight new sections of students. So, eight times 15. And we, we could fill that and support additional families. This upcoming year, there is a possibility that we will, with new hires, be able to add additional Spanish-focused sections, which would be amazing to be able to support more students in a bilingual setting at our early childhood. But four more classrooms would be a real asset to this community. Hiring teachers would, would become the next priority, but it would be amazing.
Good problem to have.
It's a very good problem to have.
Anybody else have questions for...
So is there a waiting list now that you have for...
I would have to check. Our waiting lists, the three years that I was there and last year, were very minimal. I don't think it ever reached more than 20. We are required to enroll students who we suspect or know require special education services. So we have had to increase the number of students we're serving in each of our classrooms who receive special education services, because we have to enroll them. We have had a small waiting list over the last few years, in terms of students who do require language support, because we need to make sure that we're balancing that out across those classrooms. We have had a smaller waiting list than I think we had previously to COVID. We're still increasing student enrollment and numbers back to what they, they were pre-COVID.
I have some other questions. I don't expect you to answer them now, but these are the things that I was thinking about as you were presenting. One, is it difficult for parents who, I mean, because early childhood is not daycare. So some of the kids might have to transition from one program to another, so parents can work. How do you help manage that?
I can speak to that. One, our community would love to have full-day preschool. We had a couple of full-day preschool classrooms at King, and ended up closing that for a variety of really good reasons. Even if we offered full-day preschool, many of our students would still need to go someplace after school. So they would still be in two programs, most likely. They would be in a preschool and then a, and a day, a daycare. In terms of supporting families right now who need more than just preschool program, we provide transportation to all of our early childhood students. And that is a decision that this district has made to pay for. We do not have the capacity within the Preschool for All Grant to pay for transportation. There was a time when we were able to do that, but we are no longer able to afford that and afford the staff. And so this district has made that choice. So anybody who's in a daycare in Urbana can be transported by Urbana School District to that daycare, either to or from our preschool program, which I think is a huge asset and a huge investment that you're making that benefits our families pretty significantly. Our preschool for all staff also have a very close relationship with a lot of the daycares. And part of that is due to the CU Early program, and the fact that they're starting with those families, trying to get them into daycare before they even come to us. But we work closely with lots of daycares to either support students who have special needs and share resources with them, and connect those families who are in daycare that need our services, and also communicate quite regularly with them. We also share with our families a lot of lists of daycares, either childcare and homes, thank you. Childcare and homes are daycare opportunities for them when we know they need that.
The other area that I'm interested in, and I know we've talked about this before, is preparing children for kindergarten. And I believe in the play model. I believe that that's a... I believe that that's a wonderful way. But at the other end, how do you prepare kids who have to be prepared for the structure of a different program when they turn five and go over to the elementary schools?
That is a rub that exists. Every year we talk about transitioning kids from preschool to kindergarten. And you know, our educational system is really pushing our kindergarteners, you know, through that kids assessment to have a lot of academic skills right at the beginning and to really prioritize that. And we've adopted really quality curriculum that we want to do in that space as well. And it is a huge jump at times from a two-and-a-half-day program to a full-day kindergarten. And I think that is more of a leap than going from a play base to some of the things our kindergarten teachers are doing the first few months in their kindergarten. I think the half-day to a full day is more of a challenge than even some of the differing activities or expectations. And we have, to be perfectly honest, struggled at times to really create meaningful collaboration between our pre-K teachers and our kindergarten teachers. Ms. Smith and I have spent lots of time communicating and collaborating on ways to lead that collaboration, when to do it, how to do it, how to make it so that each side isn't seeing it as a critique of the other when they're having those difficult conversations. And we've had some structures that are successful in doing that and some where we still need to work on that. But I do think that we need to continue to have conversations around what play base can look like at kindergarten while also having rigorous expectations in terms of academic outcomes.
Yeah, wasn't the academics that I was concerned about was the other?
Yeah. Our teachers worry about both, and I know you do too, Sheri, but a half-day to a full day is a big leap for some of our kids in terms of stamina, experiences.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Tanya Deacon, jumping back in again. As you can see on the slide, we're looking at Title I Part A. And the pieces that we have to work to commit to are student learning, learning conditions, and elevating educators. Student learning requires us to work towards every child making significant academic gains each year, increasing their knowledge, skills, and opportunities. So they graduate equipped to pursue a successful future with special attention paid to historic inequalities. Learning conditions, we're asked to address. All districts and schools will receive the resources necessary to create safe, healthy, and supportive learning environments and will be equipped to meet the unique academics and social-emotional needs of every child. Elevating educators is defined through Illinois's diverse student population. Will have effective educators who are prepared through multiple pathways and are supported in and recognized for their efforts to provide each and every child an education that meets their needs. For this slide, I went ahead and pulled out some of the numbers that are significant within the grant. Within the Title I structure, we have the opportunity, once every three years, where we can shift funds more than 15% to flow through the next year. So as we were working on ESER three years ago, Ms. Dion Webster and I collaborated to watch as we went along in the event that materials purchasing for supplementation of the core curriculum. We would have money sitting in Title I this year when ESER was wrapping up. So that way, we would try to minimize the financial cliff that we were anticipating. So there is why you would see over $2 million sitting with instruction materials and supplies. We also have been giving a push towards attendance and social services this year and the attendance across buildings, across all. Ms. Webster's been leading the SEAs towards meeting goals, and we've been working to support that. Improvement of instructional services, this could include professional development. It could include conferences to be able to train on different skills and bring them back to the district. Transportation can be used for different factors, primarily in this one. It is for the after-school program and the summer programming. We have $3,000 for other community services. Technically, for homeless this year, we have over $50,000. The state has changed the way that they want us to allocate funds within the grant itself. So this year, there was a new tab for that piece. And they have determined what our homeless rate is for each year, so it's always a year behind. And so we now have larger pots of money that we are required to use towards our homeless population. And then we also have our non-public school services for the non-public schools in the area that would like to participate in Title I programming. We coordinate to make sure that we're providing the pieces that they need. One of the biggest misconceptions is that Urbana would write a check and send the money. That's not allowed. They have to make sure that our plans are coordinated and that we're working together in spending the funds. So this year's budget overall is $2,997,824. The subtitle in the graph is off a little bit, but it's more than a third of the grant funding that you're hearing about this evening. If we could go ahead and advance the slide, thank you. On this slide, I listed the different positions and programs that are within our Title I grant this year. We have our Tier Three Interventionists across the district, our family liaisons, after-school programming, along with some groups, SEL committee stipends. Title I has taken a huge step forward in asking us to make sure that we are addressing the SEL needs of our students and providing training and materials to staff. We also have our kindergarten and first-grade jumpstart programs that will occur in August, August 4th through the 8th. We also, as I mentioned just a moment ago, homelessness has taken on a larger part. Way, way back in the day, probably eight to 10 years ago, the state would recommend that we only allocate $600 towards homelessness, but the need is much larger. And so the state, as I mentioned, has now required us to provide more funding. Family engagement funds are included, as well as our transportation and non-public school participation. And then curriculum initiatives, stipends for curriculum development, and professional development. Next slide, please.
Could you stop for a second, Tanya?
Sure.
Yeah, can you tell me a little bit more about the services for homeless?
Yes. One of the, it does allow us to do spending in very different and innovative ways. However, we're not allowed to spend it on hotels or food, which are two of our largest needs. So I know that Dr. Mitchell and Mrs. Webster are working together on a few other grants that will help to pay for those needs. And so what we've been doing, we have to spend the money or we lose it this year. So we have been making purchases as hygiene kits, clothing, boots, winter coats, also setting up storage. You know that we have Ms. Mitchell's closet in our buildings in the district where students, homeless, can go to and basically pick out the materials and the items that they need. Right now, we are exploring the possibility of providing a space for laundry. We have some families that are living out of their cars, and the students do not have access to being able to clean their clothes. So we are working right now on an amendment. It was submitted today to see if we could use our homeless funds on setups within our high school, middle school, and one or two of the elementaries. We are in a position where we could expand it to other elementaries, but we want to make sure we can get everything amended before you spend is their quote. So making sure that we meet those needs. We also provide school supplies with our homeless students, bus tokens. We can also pay for transportation if we have homeless students that started the school year with us, but now they're placed in a home outside of the Urbana School District. The youth transportation tab within our CDP helps to reinforce that the students can choose to still stay in the school that they started, and we provide the transportation to move them from that home back over here for their learning. So that transportation, it could be school buses, it could be taxis, it could be... We try, if I understand correctly, to stay away from Uber and Lyft, but it is something that we could use should we choose to. I'm not sure if I answered your question or created more. Did you have others?
No, that answered my question about that. And then for the after-school programming, what is the budget for that and how is it applied?
I'm sorry, the after-school programming?
Yes, how it works and part of the budget? Because I understand that it's pay for the parents, you pay for the after-school program?
There's two different after-school programs. There's ASCCP. That would be one that parents would pay for. This one is our reading rally format that we hold after school until 4:30, and that allows time for working on math, reading, and enrichment. So our after-school program does not charge for this. This is something that the grant pays for.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, but please continue, Tanya.
Okay. Then Title IV. Title IV is a grant that we do have the option that we could slide it into Title I, and then we would only have one grant of the two that we would be focused on. Title IV kind of gives us some advantages in that it's asking us to make sure that we provide well-rounded education, that we're providing safe conditions for student learning, and that we're using technology to improve academic achievement. For this year, we broke down the numbers. Overall, we had $160,114 spent. We chose to take the path this year of providing for well-rounded education, instruments for our band and choir programs, along with choir robes, to be able to help students have access who have not had it before. And then we're also looking at technology. We had started out with the typical Chromebooks and decided to change it up. We're test-driving a piece of technology right now that helps us with interpreting languages and having conversations more easily between each other. So we're very excited about that so far, and we hope to be able to expand that format into all of our buildings. Are there any questions? Okay, I'm going to hand off to Jen Roan.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about the Title I Neglected Grant. This is a relatively small grant that provides additional funding for our students from Cunningham Children's Home. It's a grant designed to serve students who live in institutions and help level the playing field and give them additional access and try to improve their outcomes. So like I said, it's a relatively small grant every year, but we are able to get some great benefits out of it. If you look at our slide here, it helps me provide for some additional support during our summer school program so I can pay for some additional teachers and teachers' assistance to really help have smaller sections in our summer school programs and additional attention to our students. It really helps provide some instructional supplements. One thing that always makes my principal heart smile is when our students love to read. And even though most of my students are struggling readers, they really, really love to read. And they really, really love to have books in their hands that they can take home. So one of my happiest pieces of this grant is always to use it to be able to say to my staff member that takes care of our school library, yes, buy more books, whatever you want, whatever kids are reading and will read right now, please, put it in your Amazon cart. Let's get those books in their hands. So that's my favorite part of this grant. It also helps provide, Beth Ladd talked about TCI trainers. We have two Gerber-specific TCI trainers that can really work with our staff and help brainstorm some of those specific behavioral needs that our students have. So this grant helps pay for their stipends and their certification so they can keep my staff in the best way possible to provide that safe support for our students when they're struggling emotionally. And then other professional development needs. Because we have students that are dealing with a myriad of mental health issues, trauma, and academic needs, I really like the ability to provide my staff with professional development in all of those areas. And this Title I grant really helps me have some freedom to do that. Any questions?
Or was any questions?
I'm sorry, what's a TCI trainer?
Sure. TCI is Therapeutic Crisis Intervention. So that is, it's a, the initial training is a five-day training, and it helps our staff learn how to de-escalate students who are experiencing a crisis situation. So hopefully, talking them down, helping look at the environment to help prevent that student going fully into a crisis. But it also includes restraint techniques if a young person is being unsafe to themselves or others. And learning how to do that in the safest, most therapeutic way possible.
Just a reminder board, next year is a contract negotiation year. And one of the things we typically do during those years is we visit, opportunity to visit and talk to the staff members at each and every one of our buildings, including Gerber. I'm calling Gerber out because they do inspiring, amazing work, and the visits there always stick with me. So I would encourage everybody to visit the building when you get an opportunity to do so.
Thank you, Paul.
We don't have the numbers on our enrollment report for Gerber. How many students are being served there?
So we have a very small population. I think our current enrollment is 34 students. Because we only serve students who are residentially placed at Cunningham, our numbers are bound by how many beds Cunningham has at any point in time.
It also varies quite a bit during the year, correct?
Yes. Yeah, I would say we have experienced amazing mobility this year. We've always been a very mobile population, but that has increased significantly this year due to some different initiatives that DCFS has right now. And so some of my classrooms have had complete turnover once or twice already this school year.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Good evening. I am Yvonda Smith, and I will have the next eight slides, okay? Okay. The mission of the Title I A 1003 is to build the capacity of the adults in order to provide a continuous improvement of school-wide systems so that we can support all of our students. This grant is designed for the specific purpose of helping school personnel implement effective school improvement practices. Multiple measures, including ELA, math, attendance, and the Five Essential Survey, are which our schools have been designated through. This year, we have five designated schools, Dr. Williams, Urbana Middle School, Thomas Paine, King Elementary School, and Leo Elementary School. The first school that we're going to talk about is Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Elementary School. You see two designations on the screen. They were designated in 2022 with a targeted designation, but then in October 2024, they received a comprehensive designation. At the bottom, it explains what targeted and comprehensive school designations are. Basically, targeted is groups of students, and it could be a variety of group of students that overlap. Comprehensive is the whole entire school. Thomas Paine also received a new designation in October 2024 of comprehensive. And so here you see the breakdown. I'm going to explain Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and Thomas Paine in the same manner. Both schools this year went through a needs assessment. One of those components is working with the American Institute for Research. It is... It is a group that is hired by ISB to meet with our schools. It required them to do a principal survey. It required them to do also a principal interview in person. They did classroom observations, and then they also did a focus group at both schools, both Thomas Paine and Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Elementary. With doing those both needs assessments, each school had to pay forty thousand dollars, forty thousand, ninety dollars to get that completed. The other half of the money is used for stipends. Those stipend amounts are paid to staff. It includes our support staff and classroom teachers, so the entire staff at King and Thomas Paine to do school improvement work, so updating the school improvement plans, looking also at an Illinois-quality supporting rubric framework. And what it does, it looks at how the district is supporting the school, how the school is functioning within itself, how the culture and climate is, how the teachers are learning, and what it tells them. And then also, the last thing that they will do is, they've been able to meet on a continuous basis outside of the normal school improvement meeting times to talk, to collaborate on what the schools are needing right now. New technology for me. So this shows Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Elementary School, which has the same breakdown as Thomas Paine. Okay, on this page, it really just outlines what the American Institute research is. We are anticipating to have the full reports so that the board can look at both of those reports from Thomas Paine and Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Elementary the week of May nineteenth through the twenty-third. I will warn you that last year, those reports did not get done before the end of the school year, which is why Dr. Preston L. Williams Junior Elementary School was not able to come to you and share their report findings. But you will receive the report findings on both of these schools. Also, in January, we, we received a gift from the state. Lucky us, we got more money. Lots of more money. So, Dr. Preston L. Williams Junior Elementary School this year was awarded three hundred and seven, two, three hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. They are still in an intensive summative designation. I want to tell you that they did use their money this year. They have a retired teacher. They were hired, they hired a retired teacher to come back and coach not only the classroom, classroom teachers, but also the long-term subs. They also were able, with the permission from ISB, to chunk sets of money aside for next year. So, Dr. Preston L. Williams and also Leo Elementary School already have embedded coaching for next year to cover ELA and math. And then on the slide for Leo, they were awarded two hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred dollars, and they have a targeted designation. Their designation did not change from two thousand twenty-two. And if you note, there is a hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars designated for the ELA and math coaches. Urbana Middle School received four hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Their designation did not change either from two thousand twenty-two. Note that they still were able to use a retired teacher-coach this year. Last year, they were able to hire the person full-time. This year, it was at a fifty percent time. They also were able to set aside money for ELA and math coaching next year. And so those professional development packages have already been paid for as well. So we're very thankful for the additional monies that we have received because we are able to pay forward for the next year for professional development to make sure that our math and our ELA content areas are supported with embedded coaching. Are there any questions about School Improvement one thousand three A?
I have a question with regards to UMS and the fact that next year, we're going to have a seventh and eighth grade and a sixth grade centers, right? So that's a new school. So, in, in terms of how the grants work with regards to two different buildings, how is that gonna, gonna happen?
That is a great question. So what we are doing now is, we are looking at what both campuses will need and ensuring that we can cover that. Tanya talked about blending and brading, and that's what we will do. We will use Title One funds, and we will also use the Title One one thousand three A to make sure both campuses have what they need. There are some things that I will tell you that the state did allow for us to forward pay for, and which is the professional development, and then also some, some of the other things that the school needs as far as materials and supplies.
One else? No other questions?
The next grant that I will talk about is the Title Two Teacher Quality. We know that having a quality teacher in front of our students is the best thing because nothing replaces teaching. So the purpose of this grant, it, it serves many purposes. It supports our new teacher mentoring and induction program. It also supports any consultants that we pay to bring into the district for a variety of reasons. And it also supports our administrators. The last couple of years, we've been able to pay for consultants to come in to coach our administrators specifically on the science of reading, being a culturally responsive leader. Last year, we did co-teaching series, and this summer, we are going to do, do a professional learning communities institute for our admin, which is basically collaborative conversations in the school. We do have a recruitment and retention specialist in this grant, but also we have provided substitutes for our, not only our schools that are working on just trying to collaborate during the day on specific things, but also to make sure our multilingual teachers are able to collaborate in order to use additional time, so they don't have to use additional time outside the school day. We know that there's a lot of time and effort, and from being a principal of a dual-language school, there's a lot of time that they put in in creating what is needed for the students. And then to make sure everything is appropriate in the context, that is what we're making sure, that our teachers don't have to do so much additional work outside of the school day. The other thing that I would remind you about is, we also have the evaluation system in our grant that is through Frontline. It is how we are able to do the tenure track of evaluations for all of our staff. And then the last thing that Tanya was talking about is the non-public instructional support. We also support Smart Academy this year with professional development needs. Are there any questions about Title Two?
Yeah, it doesn't appear to be. So thank you.
Okay. I was just going to say one thing, Sherri, in regards to the playbase. We are bringing two kids' coaches to Urbana this summer for a three-day institute. It will cover early childhood, kindergarten, and first-grade teachers because we do understand the importance of developmentally appropriate practices. They call it DAP instead of, you know, they say playbase. It is playbase, but we want to make sure too that the conversations, the language, the vocabulary does not get lost. And so these two kids' coaches particularly have been working with districts on to make sure that CKLA is not compromised. And so we have CKLA and also developmentally appropriate practices. So I will make sure you get an invite. It is June ninth through the eleventh, and we will be doing some great work.
Good evening. I'm Shawna Sheeran. I'm the Director of Urbana Adult Education. And as part of my role, I oversee the TAOP grant. This grant is dedicated to providing interventions and supports for students who are truant or who have dropped out of school, the high school, and come to us as an optional educational program at adult ed. The grant, this is the second year of a three-year grant, so the funding is level from last year. And it was distributed pretty much the same as it was last year in terms of the district portion, the, the schools portion, I should say, and the adult ed portion. So on the adult ed side, we spend some of the money for our instructors that work with our students to gain high school diploma credits towards our high school diploma. We have a transition specialist who helps them once they get close to graduation, well, helps them identify their college and career pathway, and then helps them with the transition once they get close to graduation. And then a small portion goes to our staff member who enters all the data for the district. The district's portion of the funding goes towards part of the student engagement advocate salary and benefits. So that is only a portion of it, and then the district covers the rest of the cost for our SEAs. And we have SEAs located in every school except for early childhood and Gerber and adult ed. Yankee Ridge, right, sorry, yes. Yankee Ridge, there are people there. The family liaisons do the work, but aren't covered under the TAOP grant. They're covered elsewhere. And we expect that this funding will remain the same for next year as the third year of the three-year cycle. And then we'll apply again and hopefully receive it. We've received this grant for many years and have been fairly successful in getting the funding, so we're hoping that that will continue. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you, Shawna.
The next grant that we'll review is the Title Three Grant, which I think I skipped one too many slides, John. Nope, never mind. Thanks, John. So the Title Three Multilingual Grants, their purpose is to provide supplemental funding to ensure that all of our emergent bilingual students across the district, pre-K through twelve, receive access to materials and supports to help attain English proficiency as well as develop their levels of academic achievement so that they are receiving the same rigor and access in order to meet the academic standards that we set for every other child in Urbana School District. Title Three is divided up into two more specific grants. The first one is the Immigrant Student Education Program. This grant specifically is awarded based on the number of newcomer students, so students who are recent arrivals. And the second one is the Language Instructional Education Program, and this one is calculated by a formula of number of total ELs in the district. A couple of things I wanted to mention about these grants is that the Immigrant Student Education Program Grant, if you were to look at our numbers from last year, this year did have a dramatic decrease than we had anticipated from the fall. In the fall, at my annual director's meeting, we were anticipating probably double what we actually got. And that number was because the number of newcomer students to the state of Illinois increased dramatically from October to when it was awarded in the spring. So the pot of money had to be distributed amongst a lot more kids. We are grateful that we did get some funding, thankfully, to the branding, the blending and brading that we have across our departments. We were able to still support the needs that we had for this year. Regarding the LAEP grant, the allocation was fairly similar to what we received in the past. At my director's meeting in the fall, we were warned that it would likely decrease the per pupil amount for following years. So another thing, in the words of Beth Ladd, if you would like to speak to your legislators for additional funding or to not decrease our funding, that would be great. Regarding on what we do with this funding, we have been able to provide salary and benefits for a full-time TA that supports at the high school level specifically with our newcomer students and who, our SLIF students, are students with interrupted formal education. In addition to supplementary materials for all classes that support ML students across the district. This year at King School and for our ESL students that are, that are not a part of the dual-language program, they, we did adopt supplementary curriculum that they have enjoyed using and additional tools. We've also used this money for books for classroom libraries and for the units that were mentioned in the fall when we spoke about the Bilinguality Unit Framework. An additional piece that I had this week, we actually used some of our Title Three funding to help support building libraries, especially for the sixth-grade center, with funding to purchase books for their building libraries that are native language books of all the languages that are represented in the building. In addition to that, various different subscriptions that support our students. The, this grant also supports the cost of the assessment for the sealed bilinguality testing that was mentioned earlier, as well as materials that we use when we screen students. All students that check guests on that home language survey do have to be language screened, so we use the funding for those materials. Professional development support, while Ms. Smith supports a lot with professional development, there are a couple of things that I support with as well. So all of our teachers that are using the Bilinguality Unit Framework have the opportunity to attend a professional development on how to write those units, how to implement those units, as well as providing, this summer, we will be providing a professional development specifically on how to support newcomers in a mainstream setting. As you know, we have emergent bilingual students in every single classroom and every single building of the school outside of dual language. And one, some feedback that Ms. Smith and I and Jesse Bradher have gotten is, you know, how do we continue to support these students that are not in dual language or that are not in a traditional bilingual program? And then for parent engagement, you're continuing, continuing to find funding to support parent activities. We did have a guest speaker in the fall for some of you that attended for Latina Heritage Month at the middle school. As well as also down on here, we will be supporting with funding again for parents to attend the ISB-sponsored Bilingual Parents Summit. Another piece of my grant is that Tanya had mentioned earlier, is the Bilingual Service Plan. So this, the service plan was wrapped into the CDP last year. What this is, is annually, I have to submit a plan for how we are going to serve our multilingual students. This includes what buildings, we'll have what programs, how much staff is at each building, as well as how we are going to support parents through the Bilingual Parent Advisory Committee. That plan, I believe, was linked in the documents that you got for today. It was shared with our VPAC leadership at the end of March, and they had time to provide feedback and revisions. And they did not share any additional revisions at this time. And that is what I have. Does anyone have any questions for me about Title Three?
Any questions? Thank you. Just going back to Tanya then?
Yep, this is Tanya. We're jumping back in. We have been having some conversations about grant funding in the district and what that looks like. So the top-left corner shows Ms. Smith earlier had mentioned all of the school improvement grants. When you add up all five of hers together, it's a little over a million dollars. And the key has it broken down by content and where the money is being provided from the state. To the right, tonight at our meeting, we just reviewed eight million, two hundred ninety-two thousand, five hundred eighty-four dollars in grants. The district itself and its budget has around sixteen million dollars overall. So the bottom left, by the way, the colors are flip-flop there. So tonight, you saw the orange piece, which is all of the grants that you were presented this evening, and then the other grants that were out there. Dr. Mary Ann Schloss and I talked the other day a little bit about what is sitting in that area with the seven point seven million. It would be the Essar Grant. The monies that we still had as we entered in past July one, we were allowed to spend that through October. We also had our Twenty First Century Grants that went until August thirty-first. We have after-school programming grants, teacher vac- vacancy grants, and then lots of other little grants that are in place that make up the whole piece of the pie there. So then when we get to the end and we're taking a look at our money, we're seeing that out of the overall district fund, roughly six to seven percent is made up of grant funding. And I've listened to the news almost every night and just always wonder what is going to be the next step. Dr. Schloss had recommended that I attend the NAFIBA conference back in March, and they had shared information at that time about what, and they being attorneys, AASA, and the Department of Education. And they all seemed pretty consistent that they felt that the IDEA grant and the Title One grants would remain fairly stable, as will Title Four and CTE, because those are college and career-directed monies. The others can be worked into existing grants, but at the moment, there's not been any final decisions. So we're just trying to make sure we're aware and that we're watching what is going on in Washington. So we're just trying to make sure we're aware and that we're watching what is going on in Washington. Were there any questions about those?
Board members, any questions? No, thanks for the update.
Yes. So the next slide just thanks the people that had worked on the CDP and all of the grant work that they do to support that. And on the last slide, just a reminder that at our next board meeting, we'll be asking that you sign off on the consolidated district plan so that we can get that submitted to the state. We aren't allowed to have any of our federal grants approved until the CDP is approved. There is a constant flux of employment at ISB with a lot of changes all the time, so some years that can hang us up a little bit. So we're trying to bump ahead a little bit more this year to try to get this pulled together and get it submitted. So we appreciate your time and your patience as we share, shared the work that we're all passionate about. And if there are any further questions, please let us know.
All right, thank you. We do have, as typical for business meetings, a slate of action items to approve. Starting with our consent agenda, I know some of these items are going to get pulled off, including eleven, Sherry, eleven dot eight, eleven dot seven, and let's go ahead and pull out eleven dot one as well into separate individual action items. So I'll read off the consent agenda, and if anybody wishes any of the remaining ones we pulled off, indicate that when we're done. Starting off is eleven dot two. Bills checks for February, March, education fund bills for four million dollars. Operations and maintenance fund bills for five hundred eleven thousand dollars. Transportation fund bills for six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Working cash bonds for approximately three point seven million dollars. School facility occupancy tax for a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Tort for a hundred ninety thousand dollars. Payroll, salary and benefits for ten point one million dollars. And Urbana Adult Education for a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. There is a variety of personnel items that were listed in our, in our packet. And there's also an administrative personnel item, eleven dot four, that needs to be approved. Appointment of school auditor. Forvis LLP at a fee of almost fifty-six thousand dollars. It's a twenty-six hundred increase over the 2023, 2024 audit. And then eleven dot six is a resolution authorizing and directing the sale Yankee Ridge and audio, audiometers and the light portascribe. Is there a motion to, does anyone wish to have any removed from the consent agenda? So would you like to have removed the consent agenda?
I had a question about some of the personnel items.
Okay.
Is it, is this one I would ask or not?
You could wait after we move?
Oh, after.
Unless you want to pull them separate, and then we could talk about that. But we could, we could also talk about it during a consent motion. All right. Is there a move to approve the entire consent agenda? Second. Moving to second. Now will be the time for, for your question.
Obviously, we've had a lot of teacher transfers between the high school and the, I'm sorry, the middle school and the sixth grade center, which was to be expected. Some teachers moving from the middle school to the sixth grade center. It seems in this piece that we've had a lot of teachers being hired or being transferred to the middle school, which would be just for the seventh and eighth graders. And I am, I am wondering if we will get a financial accounting of extra expenses that will be incurred because of the sixth grade center. Yes, if, if we have transferred certain teachers to the middle school, from the middle school to the sixth grade center, there was no extra cost. But if we're hiring more teachers or transferring teachers from the high school to the middle school to replace those teachers, there has been an extra cost. And I, I was wondering if we will get some sort of accounting for, for that. And because I am concerned that this has, it has been suggested to me that perhaps some of the cuts at the high school level have to do, are related to the, needing more teachers at the middle school because we have enough, we have the sixth grade center, so.
So this was a question I asked essentially during the UA roundtable we held a week ago. And what I was told was that basically, that the basic plan for additional FTE ads at the sixth grade center, which was presented to us back in May, is ostensibly the same, except they had to add one more music teacher because of exceptionally high enrollment in incoming sixth grade band. So if you go back to the presentation that was giving, given to us in terms of additional FTE ads that from back last May, it's basically the same.
I suggest you talk to Angie about any of the specific ones, if you have a question, because she'd be the one to know where they're coming from and why.
Any other questions? The consent agenda's on the floor. Roll call, please.
Member Hickson?
Yes.
Member Baxley?
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
President Palowski?
Yes.
Member Stanton?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving back to the items that were removed, the consent agenda, starting with eleven dot one, which is our minutes from the March 11th, 2025 business meeting, the March 25th, 2025 District Parent Teacher Advisory Committee, March 26th, special meeting, the April 1st study session, and the April 8th BOE UA roundtable. Worthy of note, the published minutes from the, in our packet for the April 8th meeting included all seven board members being present, and we only had five, who, we had Member Hickson and Member Stanton were not able to attend. So if when we approve these minutes, they should be amended to reflect that. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as just read by me?
I move to approve with the amendments that you just mentioned.
Second.
Moving to second. Any further comments or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eleven dot seven is our CU Transit District Contract Renewal. Is there a motion for the floor?
A move for approval. That'll get the discussion going at least.
Second.
Moving to second. Now will be the time for any, any questions or comments?
The only question I had, or the only comment that I made, is that it's, it's quite an ordeal to, to schedule everybody and the, all the students in the schools, and especially adding to the sixth grade center. And I thought the presentation was well done and gave us a lot of the information, answered a lot of the questions that we needed to know to get started for the next year. And I just didn't want to know if anybody else had any concerns or before we go on, because we really didn't discuss it, we just heard the presentation.
Yeah, if anybody has concerns about the contract, I guess now will be the time to voice them.
Or is there anything else that, hello, Dr. Hifry Tatum, would you like to add about them?
No, I didn't receive any questions unless Mary Ann did in the two weeks since we talked about it when the MTD folks were here, but.
I don't, I haven't received any questions.
All right. All right. If there are no further questions or comments, roll call vote will be in order.
Member Baxley?
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
President Palowski?
Yes.
Member Stanton?
Yeah.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Hickson?
Yes.
Lastly is eleven dot eight, the Quest Food Management Services contract continuation. This is a extension request from the current contract to allow them to serve the district for the 2025, 2026 school year. Is there a motion for the floor?
A move for approval?
Second.
Moving to second. Any, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I had a lot of questions regarding, after the presentation, or was it presentation? The representatives from Quest came and spoke to us and, and, and were very dedicated about wanting to fix all the issues that they had before. So I wanted some follow-up regarding.
Should we invite Emily up, since she's here? Are these going to be questions that Mary Ann and I can answer? We asked them to come tonight, so they could kind of speak to some of the things. So if you guys want to come up to the table. They've been doing a lot of things to kind of remediate and improve, so.
Yeah.
So Sherry, was there a specific question that you're wanting, or?
I wanted to make sure that the, the problems were resolved, yes. And that there, there was a satisfaction at the high school based on the serving and also the temperatures of the food. And I did get some information from Mr. Guzman, who said he was satisfied, so that was very helpful, but.
So why don't you guys share, we met with, we met, what, two weeks ago? And they shared a lot of things that they've done since then, so this is.
Can I print it out? Do you have your email printed out?
Yeah, perfect.
Okay, I will just go through the list that.
You want to introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Emily Lane, hello. I'm the new food service director here for, you know, I work for Quest Food Service Management. So I'm just going to go through real quick, just to kind of follow up what you asked, Sherry. All of our leads have successfully taken and passed their, it is called CFPM, and this stands for Certified Food Protection Manager courses, and this is good for five years. Additionally, to all of our other team members, they have completed their Always Food Safe Food Handler coursework and also an allergen awareness coursework. With this, we've also, Quest has engaged a third-party auditor. They're called Steritech, and they just come in and they do private health inspections. And that is what we engaged. And then also myself and then our chef that we have onboard, we are doing internal, they're called my field audits. So they're quick, really easy, five-minute pulse check-ins at every location, and this is done at every school weekly. With this, all of our team members were retrained on food handling, temperature danger zone, personal hygiene, hand washing, and also cross-contamination. Since the leadership change here, we have passed every inspection, including the reinspection at the high school. And then to go along with that, after the reinspection at the high school, we did meet in person with the Department of Health. So we went over to CU PhD and met in person with the inspectors just to kind of get, you know, their input on everything. So yeah, we have successfully passed every inspection since then.
All right, is there any other questions or comments, motions on the floor?
Want to comment and question something? I think I'm being communication with you as a parent of someone in the school. Thank you so much. I found it really easy to communicate. One of the things I'm struggling, and a lot of people struggle, is to print the menus from the website. When you try to print it, they give you the whole thing, and it's like seven pages, and it's really hard to navigate. I know the schools have the menu, like sensitized, resume, oh, resume of all those menus on there. I wonder if that's something that you can improve in your website or in the app? That also is really hard to navigate. That's the only concern we have right now.
So the website is probably us. So is there something else we could do? I mean, like when you go on the website, is it taking them directly to Quest? Or is it how we're posting them on our website?
When you go to, because I have experience to do it, when you go to the menu, you look for Yankee Ridge, who does make it cool. And then you go to food menu, they give you a link to the Quests or whatever it is in here. And then it give you a link for the menu, and it comes with all the specifications of what, how much calories and grains. And you try to print the seven pages. But in school, they had the menu from there, and they had the three choices they have, which I'm still, right now I'm working with my son who is vegetarian, and we have a special plan for. But sometimes the kids, the vegetarian kids have a lot of choices, more like chocolate cookie, something like that, and there's some butter, some butter flour, something.
Some butter.
So it's not really like something attractive for kids. But I did sign for the other, and now we are working with that, which I inspire in everybody who is vegetarian or have a special diet to do it as an alternative. But yeah, navigating the menu to me to know what is in there is really hard.
Okay.
And it's been very hard since the beginning.
Yeah, maybe. That's something that we, were you going to say add to that or something?
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm Marissa Trout, the district manager with Quest. I work closely with Emily, and we are internally working on a new website to roll out in the fall. I was on the demonstration with our Associate Vice President of Marketing just this week, my Quest. I'm happy to demo that with you and her as well. We're aware of some of the limitations as it presents to, or as it relates to forward-facing menus. And so I think you'll be really pleased with the website, the platform, kind of a one-stop shop for information for students and family members. So that will be out in the fall, and I'm happy to set up a demo for you with that prior to launch to get some feedback.
And maybe, John, we can look at what, how it's being posted? And I mean, I feel bad that somebody has to print seven pages to get.
Yeah, I'm on the website right now. Yeah, it looks like it goes through Link Connect. Does that make sense? Yeah, so I think.
But can't we print a PDF and post it ourselves?
I think it would, and correct me if I'm wrong, but with like menu changes and things like that, I don't know how easily accessible it would be for it to be available for each school.
And there's different menus as you scroll through there, depending if you're elementary or a serving school or elementary in a cooking school or a middle school. That's why it has kind of that structure, and I'm sorry, it's kind of a frustration on our side as well.
I'm also at the high school twice a month all through the lunches, and I just want to say it's very well organized, lots of variety, and it's very appetizing. So I, I think it's a good program, so.
I also had a chance to eat at the high school on Monday. I had a nice taco salad. I'm not vegetarian, but I appreciated seeing the unmeat option, plant-based option available. But the food, it was a nice little taco salad. I do have a few comments and suggestions for people who come into the school, and I know you don't get this often, but who come into the school who aren't teachers and aren't students, and so they don't have an account. And, but I'll share that along with just some observations that I had myself with the staff there. Not bad, but just needing to be cognizant of those that are sharing the space and the conversations that are being had. You never know who's walking in. I certainly didn't say I'm a board member or announce myself, and I didn't look like a board member. But some of the conversations probably should have been behind closed doors. So just little stuff like that I'll share, but the, the food was good, and I hope that things continue on the positive side for Quest and at the high school.
One more thing, I discovered something today that I never saw before, because I always stop at the chocolate hummus, I never go beyond that. But it was nice to see that there was a coffee shop there too, and students have that option as well. So that's à la carte, so.
Anyone else? Comments or questions?
The changes that you all made, were they just something that was tweaked? Or was it just the overall change in the protocol, the way things are set up, would you say?
So I will say both. So actually, with all the inspections and everything that did happen here at the Quest level, we have changed what we call SOPs, so Standards of Practice, to how, you know, at every account that Quest has, how we submit health inspections. So it's being monitored. How we, you know, came into this was a reoccurring thing, so that's how the yellow placard was placed. And so now we have a team that watches everyone's health inspections, and also work orders get submitted into our new SOPs too. So that's being followed as well.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
Can I add one thing too? So I know Emily took over after all of this happened. She was kind of our lead dietitian, was that your official title? And has been really, really responsive. I mean, like she's in communication constantly with Mary Ann, and every time they have someone is in one of the schools, we get an email saying, you know, that we passed, and here's what we did, and so.
I, I don't know if the board's aware, but we get. I don't know if the board's aware, but we get two health inspections for every building every year. So the health inspections aren't anything new. And I think that there was some confusion too about like failing or that there was any kind of like lag in service. And there was just one line that needed to go back and reheat. And so it was, it was just to kind of like a, oh, we need to go reheat. But since there was a couple of instances where there was repeat issues, then that's how they got the yellow card and the bad publicity. So, but since then, there's been, and we were meeting regularly, but I have to say that the meetings are very regular. And then even, I don't know if it's quarterly or monthly that we get to meet with Marissa too, but we meet with Marissa just as frequently. But anytime I see or have any concerns, if somebody reports them to my office and we get them to Emily, there is some plan of action in place, which makes me feel a lot more comfortable knowing that things are being addressed.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Member Langendorf, yes. Vice President Exum.
Yes.
President Palowski.
Yes.
Member Stanton.
Yes.
Member Jones.
Yes.
Member Hickson.
Yes.
Member Baxley.
Yes.
Moving on to our individual action items. First up are gifts. Altus USA International District Six donated time stuffing 300-plus supply bags for kindergarten registration held April 10th at Lincoln Square. Contractor Association donated $500 to Urbana High School. Project Athletes donated $250 worth of baseball gloves, batting gloves, pants, belts, and water bottles to Urbana High School baseball program. Donna Lindsay-Petterick donated $200 to the Evern Burnett Underwood Music Assistance Program. Is there a motion to receive the gifts and to send out the appropriate thank yous?
So I move.
Second.
Move seconded. Any comments or discussion?
Yes. Altusa donated $750 for that. I don't know if we had acknowledged them before, but not only did they donate the time, but they also gave $750 for the materials.
Okay. I guess.
Yeah, we'll add that to, yeah, I'm glad you said that, because it doesn't say that on there, so yes.
Motion's on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up is our school resource officer SRO contract agreement. This was discussed at our, at our last meeting. Is there a motion for the floor?
I move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Before we progress, I wanted, we got an email that I neglected to bring up. It's from Nate Wall, who couldn't make it tonight to make his citizen statement. But he, he sent the board an email basically asking to voice his, I might put it up here, his vociferous support for the SRO program, especially at the high, at the high school, middle school. If I could find it. Here it is. Promised we would read this, so we had to go ahead and do it. He's writing to express his strong support for the continuation of the SRO officers at Urbana High School, Urbana Middle School, and Urbana Sixth Grade Center. They play a vital role in maintaining a safe, supportive, and positive environment for students, staff, and families within the school community. Their presence not only provides a sense of security, but also fosters trust and builds meaningful relationships between students and law enforcement. When implemented effectively, SRO programs contribute to a holistic approach to student well-being, one that includes mentoring, education, and early intervention in addition to safety in an era where school safety is of growing concern. Having trained compassion officers who understand the unique needs of young people is more important than ever. Our SROs do more than support, the more they respond to incidents, they participate in student life, collaborate with educators, and support students in making positive choices, both in and out of the classroom. They are accessible role models who help bridge the gap between law enforcement and the communities they serve. Removing SROs from our schools would not only eliminate a layer of security, but also a valuable resource for students who may be facing personal challenges, struggling with peer relationships, or navigating difficult situations at home. I urge the decision-makers to continue supporting the program and to invest in training and accountability measures that ensure our SROs are the best equipped to serve Urbana's diverse student population with respect, equity, and care. From Mr. Nate.
And he's a dean, he's a dean at the middle school?
Mm-hmm, yes. Sherri, I wanted to add that we have been working on the request to have the kind of informational, like, I think Lori shared that, but I wanted to say it out loud too, so I didn't want the rest of the board members to. Sherri asked if we could have a space. So Mr. Guzman's been busy, so we have a space. It's the 29th of April, so I know it's after this. But we still wanted to be able to have that, so he sent us that date yesterday, I believe, where we could have, and we'll find time for Michelle to come over and announce that at the middle school level to Mrs. Robinson from the middle school to come over. So if there are any parents who want to come over and meet her at the high school, we could work around that time. What was the time again, Lori? My computer is having issues. Eleven to one, okay. Okay.
Great. Any comments, questions?
Can I add one more thing?
Sure.
And so this will be going before a city council on the 21st as well, so.
Last call for comments, questions, or concerns. All right, roll call vote, it's again in order.
Vice President Exum.
Yes.
President Palowski.
Yes.
Member Stanton.
Yes.
Member Jones.
Yes.
Member Hickson.
Yes.
Member Baxley.
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes.
Motion passes. Twelve dot three is lifting up LLC agreement. The administration is requesting approval of a one-year professional services agreement between the Urbana School District 116 and lifting up LLC. Is there a motion for the floor?
Move for approval.
Second.
So moved and seconded. I'm gonna ask a question, I guess if we tell the public what lifting up LLC is.
So they presented at our last meeting. And so if you didn't watch the presentation, I'd encourage you to go back, because I am not going to be able to share all the information that was shared and comments. So lifting up is also referred to as Handle with Care. And it would be a collaboration with Urbana Police, where we would be working with them to provide, they would provide information for us for, in a very safe, approved way, where we could support students who had experienced some kind of trauma in their home related to some police event or some trauma response event that, of course, the schools would not be aware of. And John is gonna work directly with them in terms of protecting all that student information. We have a couple of community partners who are financing it for the year. United Way and Community Coalition are taking care of the costs. This is something that a couple of districts that also use it, Peoria, Decatur, I believe, maybe Bloomington, no, mostly just the Peoria area maybe, not as far as Bloomington. But they love it, and their population is, you know, weight is diverse as ours, if not even more diverse and much larger. And all of their schools participate. So what would happen is if there was an incident at one of our students' homes on the weekend or at night, and it involved a parent being arrested or a student seeing a very inappropriate or violent event or whatever happen in the home, we would get an email the next morning with that student's ID number. And through our system, and of course, the police would not have the students' names or anything. It would just all be done very much through student IDs. We'd get that information, and a very select, small few people will get that information, like the Iwood, John, the principal of the building, and an identified person in the building who is like the threat assessment leader coordinator for the school would get that. And then there's a training that goes with this, so then they would know how to intervene and how to respond. You know, because our response wouldn't be, I heard the police were at your house last night. It would be more so, you know, they have a very select kind of way that you approach that student, and you offer support in a kind of non-judgmental, non, you know, sharing information way. So we're gonna pilot it for next year and see how it goes. The police, Urbana Police came to us with it. United Way brought it to us. I had not heard of it prior to them approaching us to do it. And we had several meetings and discussions. And we're looking forward to being able to better support some of our families and our students through this effort.
I think one of the challenges would be, because we have so many different cultures, and some of them would be very embarrassed or want to be very private. So it's good that they, our representatives in our school will be trained to understand those and not to really address the situation, but to check up on the student.
And our, all of our schools have threat assessment teams, and most of the student support staff are part of those teams. You know, people like our social workers and counselors. And so my hope is that when that information is received, know they, there's enough of a relationship with the students or the families to know if this is a family that will, or a student who is, you know, be more harmful than good to approach them, I think is, we'll have to rely on our school staff for that. And so that's a really good point too, so.
Thanks for the broader context. Any other questions or comments? Roll call vote is again in order.
President Palowski.
Yes.
Member Stanton. Oh. Member Jones.
Yes.
Member Hickson.
Yes.
Member Baxley.
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes. Vice President Exum.
Yes.
Motion passes. Twelve dot four is a handle with care, member of understanding. So this is the agreement that allows us to work with the Urbana Police Department in order to enable the, what's going on with lifting up the handle with care program. Is there a motion for the floor?
I move for approval.
Second.
Any comments or discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Stanton, yes. Member Jones.
Yes.
Member Hickson.
Yes.
Member Baxley.
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes. Vice President Exum.
Yes.
President Palowski.
Yes. Twelve dot five is our district 2026, 2027 calendar, which was discussed again at our, at our last meeting. Is there a motion for the floor?
I move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments, questions? All right. Roll call, roll call vote, please.
Member Jones.
Yes.
Member Hickson.
Yes.
Member Baxley.
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes. President, Vice President Exum.
Yes.
President Palowski.
Yes. And twelve dot six, lastly.
Member Stanton.
I'm sorry, I jumped the gun. I'm sorry. Yes, it's past seven, I'll get one more vote. Twelve dot six is our Sixth Grade Center cleaning contract bids. Is there a motion for the floor?
I move for approval.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Randy, you have to provide any context? ESS is the provider for $118,620.
Yeah, we held the bid opening April 1st for a one-year contract with the Sixth Grade Center. We had six bidders pick up bid packages, and had four interested bidders submit bids. The qualifying bids ranged from $118,620,000, or $118,600, $118,620 to $153,150.
Wow.
ESS Clean Inc. of Urbana has agreed to terms of our service without hesitation. And after thoroughly reviewing the contract with ESS and knowing they are comfortable with their bid, I recommend the bid except, remember the board accepts the bid and also recommend the board approves us to a one-year contract service between ESS and Urbana School District.
Great. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please. Jennifer, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I was wondering, do we always have a separate bid for each school? So like one company would do the middle school, or a different company would do the high school, and?
We used to have one company do it all. And then we got into, when ESS lost the contract to a company called ABM, ABM couldn't do it. They, a billion-dollar corporation, and wasn't able to staff all the buildings. And so then I reached out to a bunch of smaller companies to, when I was getting rid of ABM, to look at and to see if they would be interested in that, and they were. And we invited up, and our contract currently says that you can't have more than half of the buildings. So like not one company can have more than half of the buildings. So it's kind of split up amongst all buildings, and each building is bid out separately, except for the high school and middle school. We keep those as one.
And is this for, does, does this pay for the janitorial staff that are on staff in the building during the day, or just for the after-school cleaning?
The evening cleaning.
Great questions.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Member Baxley.
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes. Vice President Exum.
Yes.
President Palowski.
Yes.
Member Stanton.
Yes.
Member Jones.
Yes.
Member Hickson.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next up is our superintendent's report.
Sorry, I'm waiting for John. All right, so this weekend, the UHS Science Olympia team placed second in the state after placing 13th last year. And this is only after the program has been revived. I believe it's been three years back. You probably had this in yours too, I think I saw it right. Different little notes. And so here's the team, really excited. Six were named state champions, Colin Guth and Elliot Anderson in Wind Power. Elliot and Natalie Pulsiesk in Helicopter. Natalie and JJ Lee in Material Science. JJ and Colin in Robot Tour. And Cecilia Birdsley in Sydney Godell in Insects. So there they all are. So exciting. It's great that we have a sponsor who has just jumped right in and taken the program so far in just three years. So that's awesome. Dual-language tours. So there are a lot of things that we haven't brought back since COVID, and this is one of them. So slowly, we're kind of talking about things, like why aren't we doing that anymore? We haven't done it since the pandemic. And so we are going back to offering the tours again. And we've had several requests for tours. Now that the dual-language program is in one location, people are really, are incoming kindergarten families and people who just want to see the program before they make a decision if they want to be part of the dual-language program. So we're bringing back the tours. And they are going to be happening on Tuesday, April 15th. We're providing an afternoon and a morning option for our working families. So hopefully, if the afternoon on the 15th doesn't work for you, maybe Monday, the 21st, in the morning at 9:30 does. We think it's really important for people to tour while the students are there, so you get a realistic view of the program and the diversity of the students, the student body. And just you get to see school happening. So there are always things that we do at night where we can, people can come in, and we'll have our, we'll talk about kindergarten open house here in a second. But it's way more meaningful when you get to actually go into a classroom and see learning and instruction happening. And so there'll be guided tours. Administrators will provide those tours, the building administrators. And incoming parents will get to go in and see the kindergarten classrooms in action. If you have questions, I know Director Riconi was here tonight for her presentation, but you can definitely email her and ask more. Of course, board members are always welcome to go and hop in a tour. If you yourself have not been able to go over during the day while instruction is happening, it's something you really should see, so. Yeah, we're excited about that. Kindergarten open house is always in the end of the year in May. So this is another opportunity where we open up all the buildings. And we have staff available where you can go in, you can see the classrooms. There's usually a very short introduction and presentation, and also a short tour. So these are all within, in the month of May. And in the evening, we keep them to about an hour, and it is very informal. So, you know, people shouldn't feel, you know, that they're going to be asked to do a lot. It is really open, just very much an open house feel, where you come in. They will do a little bit of a present. They will do a little bit of a presentation about some of the new curriculum and just what to expect in kindergarten. But most of it will be just walking around and looking and just seeing the spaces. So we'll be sharing these out for the weeks to come. So excited about that. Kindergarten registration, I should also add, was last week. I know we've been talking about it for several weeks. So if you have not registered your incoming kindergarten student, please, please, please do so at kindergarten@usd116.org. Camp Invention is a longstanding program that we have offered in our community, I don't know how many years, but it is a, it's open to all USD students in grades K through six. Most of our students attend for free because there are scholarships available. You do have to do a little bit of work for them, but not a lot. And we have staff who will help support you to get through the paperwork that you fill out. This is a full one-week camp. It fills up every year, we always have a waiting list. It is run by the Camp Invention people. We provide the space. We provide teachers who might want to work, but the activities and a lot of the curriculum come from the Camp Invention program. In the years prior to this, Ms. Ochoa from Leo has been the principal and it's been housed at Leo. But the assistant principal at Yankee Ridge Multilingual, Erica Rudolph, is going to be the director of the program this summer. So we are moving it to Yankee Ridge Multilingual School. So if you're interested, there is a link here where you can sign up. I'd encourage you, do not wait until June because the program will be full by then. Broadway on Vine, Moana Junior, great show. And it was just really great. I know Thursday I had a conflict, but I was able to go on Saturday. And it is just always, I'm just always so impressed by the level of talent of our young people. There are a lot of eighth graders in this show. So several of the high school people were around saying, are they all coming to the high school? So hopefully we will keep them engaged in drama and theater and all the wonderful things. We had singing, there was a little dancing, just great. The crew behind the scenes, the sets were amazing. And I know there were a lot of parents who helped and it takes a lot of effort from our staff, the directors, to put this on. So it isn't just the kids that you see that come out and do the acting and singing, it is all the things that go on behind the scenes. So it was very well attended. Today they had one of the elementary show days. There's another day for the, when is the other one? Angie, is it tomorrow? So our elementary schools are invited to bring like fourth and fifth grade classes over. Also during the day, they get a bus and they can come over and see, it's like a little field trip. Something for them to look forward to when they're older and they get to participate in things like this. So shout out and congratulations to Broadway on Vine. So tomorrow is the mayoral recognition program at UHS. Hopefully everybody here, I think Lori already got everyone their cards and your invites. So it is an open opportunity for you to come. This is Mayor Marlins' last recognition. And so I know it will be kind of heartfelt for her because this was a, this was kind of her vision and a program that she really brought to us and just has supported so much over the years. So I know it'll be a little, little sad, but also exciting. Then Friday, there's no school spring holiday. On May first, online registration opens, so we will be sharing out a lot of information about that for our returning students. And then May seventh is Bike and Road to School Day.
Besides the Invention Camp, there is any other splash or camp, summer camp offered too?
Oh, yes. And I don't think Catherine has the flyer ready for that yet, but we have CU Around Town, which we offer every year. That again, I think is going to be a king. We don't have the sixth grade transition because the sixth grade, the building won't be open. But we will have the other two programs that happen at the middle school. And of course, the high school will have their regular summer school as always. The two sessions that they offer that start the week after we get out and they go all, first session is in June, the second session is in July. And ESY, the extended school year for our students who have IEPs are also. Do you know where those are going to be, Mary Ann? I don't have, my computer is like, not working right now. Did you guys have your summer school? Yeah, I can't remember. I think CU Around Town is at King, but I can't remember. Do you know, Randy? It's been at King the last couple of years.
So.
Okay.
But that is not like a splash, this is a full day, it's only part of it?
No, it's not a full day, it's a half day, yeah. And you know, we don't have the Twenty First Century Grant anymore. So that is the grant that really funded the full day summer program options that we've had for years and years and years. And we don't have that grant anymore. So we've been trying to use title funds to put together the summer programming, so they won't be able to be full day, but definitely keeping the half day option. We'll still have the two programs, well, there'll be three things in August. So the high school transition week will be in August, that week before school starts. We will have jump start for kindergarten and jump start for first grade the week before school starts, like we did this past summer. That was really well attended and very successful for families who were a little nervous about kindergarten. Their kindergartners get to go the week before school and figure, learn a little bit and figure it all out before they have to officially be there, so. Nothing in July, it's all, except for ESY. ESY High School, Gerber runs pretty much the whole summer, so.
Tomorrow is.
Strategic planning, yes, Wednesday and Thursday. So we've been very busy with that, so yeah, we're excited about that. Full day, so if you're looking for me, I will not be, I'll probably not be checking email until much later in the evening, both days.
And then Friday is, is a spring holiday.
Mm-hmm.
And then Monday is the due date for applications for Sub District Six. So if anybody out there is interested in being a board member for Sub District Six.
Yes.
Including Tori. Please fill out a form.
We keep trying.
We're gonna, I'm gonna really miss you.
This one here.
Anyway, if somebody is interested in filling the seat, please fill out the form and turn it to the district offices by Monday, the twenty first.
Yes, thank you for that reminder.
We do have a special meeting on Thursday for Student Discipline at six PM at eleven oh one East University Avenue. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move. I second.
Yeah, it's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you, everybody.